It looks like it's six o'clock. I'd like to have the Town of Hennessy Board Trustees Regular Meeting, August 10th, 2023, Town Hall, 1237 Main Council Room at 6:00 PM. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Yeah.
David?
Here.
Report from Hennessy United Board.
They're gonna admit, as far as I know.
Yeah, I think they said they were gonna take some time off.
At the last one, they said it's in September.
September, I think, yeah.
Consider approval of consent agenda. A, minutes of July meetings. B, approval of claims as follows. July purchase orders, eleven thousand, twelve dollars, seventy-six cents. August purchase orders, fifty-five thousand, one twenty-one, sixty-nine. August RSTF, sixty-five thousand, one sixty-one, thirty-four. August Library Fund, one thousand, thirty-three, seven, fifty-nine. August Street and Alley Fund is two thousand, two hundred and sixty-three, sixteen. C, accept the following reports as treasurer, library, and police.
Question, sir?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the consent agenda. We talked at our last meeting about Ms. Burts was to check on the CDs. And actually, that's on both consent agendas, HUA and Town. I was wondering, Ms. Starla, did Ms. Burts check on those CDs, talk to the bank? Do we have any information on that?
Not my knowledge.
Okay. Sounds like we need to put that on our next meeting agenda, then. I'm good, Cliff, thank you.
Okay. If nothing else, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Take it.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Town Administrator Report. Purchased and new employees.
Okay. Can I just read it?
Yes.
Okay. Resignation of Georgia Tillman was accepted. Brayden Peck is now working mornings here at Town Hall and afternoons at the Police Department. They opted to share with us. He will be doing the AP here at Town Hall. He went through the training. He's been with the Town of Hennessy for nine years, and we're really happy to have him. She's really good. Come on, really quick. We had eight permits issued for July. Two fences, one at 212 North Sinron, one at 412 Osborne. Six solar installs. Four Ts, 508 Merrimack, 603 East Third, 523 South Cheyenne, and 220 South Cheyenne. And there's more that's coming in every day. We also issued a permit for Hennessy Public Schools for certificate lock. The daily deposits at the pool are now being made by nightly deposits at the bank by the pool managers. They were previously picked up or being dropped off at Town Hall and left here overnight. I met with the manager of the pool for a list of items for next year's budget and items that needed repair. I was disappointed to find out that they've been without umbrellas this summer, and it has been a miserable, hot summer. This is a huge health risk and unexcusable in my eyes. It should have been purchased. They did have concerns about the way, the unprofessional treatment they have been receiving from some town management, and those issues are being attended to now. Town Hall is now going to be open through lunch hour, starting August 14th. We're gonna switch it, and we'll be open the whole time. And we are proud owners in the ladies restroom of a new toilet, and it's been installed.
Yay!
Yeah. In September, there will be six employees and two board members attending the OML Conference in Oakmont City. The cell phone contract was moved from Pioneer Verizon to AT&amp;T. All cell phones were switched over, and a replacement phone had to be purchased due to the age of the other phone. And it came at a price of seventy-five dollars for that. Mercedes Villarreal has been hired to clean Town Hall on a monthly basis. She's gonna begin this Saturday on August 12th. On pump number two, out at, I have to think what they did, water plant, the motor went out, and it was replaced by their spare one there at the station. Alyssa thought that pump number two is still under warranty because it was fairly new, and so she's checking on that, the process right now. And she took me through and gave me a tour of it, and also gave me an inventory of all her vehicles. And so that has started the list that we wanted of all the inventory in there. Supplies have been organized in the office so that we know where everything is. It helps to keep from reordering the same items, so it should save us quite a bit on office funds. I've checked on the retention of records. Seven years on all bank statements are to be kept, and three years on time cards and payroll stubs. After disposing of all the older files that we've got, they date back to 2000 and 2002 in the safe on all of them. We'll have enough room to be able to file in there because we're gonna need the space for the new records, and we totally ran out of space to be able to get to them if we need them. I've started working on personnel files. They're being put together. I'm currently taking bids on a back door in a keyless entry system. There's not a list of who has keys to this building, and an accident prompted this weekend for me. I drove by, all the lights were on in the office, and I was afraid someone was in here. I got the back door open because it sometimes does not open, and we've had to go around to the front and go through that direction. I called Jamie for help. I didn't want to do it alone. He came up, went through all the offices with me in the safe, and no one was here. But we still didn't know if someone had been in here. Keyless entry would prove who's here and what time they're here. I have serious concerns about a missing debit card. I was told that one existed, but no one seems to know where it's at. I'm not on the bank signature card, so Cliff, if you don't mind calling Interbank for me and canceling it, just so, I'd appreciate it.
Do you know who the name is on?
No, I do not. I would assume Town of Hennessy.
Okay.
My short-term goal is to improve the efficiency of the office and the relationship between Town Hall and the citizens. I think we're at a point that we really need that right now. So, that's all I have.
Starla, I would like to see when you get the pricing on the key control system to bring that before the board.
I will, okay.
Okay. Because I know, I've checked on those myself, and I know there's many out there, some that you can tell who's coming and going in times, and I think those get pretty pricey, but I'm not.
I talked to Aaron about it, and he told me what he had, he said it was pricey, and that's kind of where I was looking at, was to go way below that, but still be able to keep those abilities to know who's in here and at what time. So, but I will.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Other scheduled business. Discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. A, discuss with possible action to approve payment of noted invoice 1-8523-3 for ten thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars using local funds for CDVG grant 1-8523-21. It says it's seventy-five percent is completed and that we owe a balance of ten thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
This is what was funded for that application time, so no extra fees. It should be a twenty percent invoice, or a forty percent invoice, sorry, on number three. So our first invoice is twenty percent, second invoice is twenty percent, third invoice is forty, and then the final one is twenty.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the payment of noted invoice 1-8523-3 for ten thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars using local funds for CDVG grant 1-8523-21.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
B, discuss with possible action to approve the pay application number five for K. Kraft Rentals for thirty-four thousand, eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents using local funds for CDVG grant 1-8523-21.
So this one, you've been, the first four, we've been using the CDVG grant funds to pay the invoices, but in our budget, because of the cost of everything, we've added a little bit. We had some local, and we've added a little local, so I wanted to start to use that part to, towards the project. But there's not much left in construction from CDVG.
That'll leave us upon one hundred and eighteen thousand, four seventy-two.
Mm-hmm.
And that's titled local money, correct.
I don't think all one hundred and eighteen will be, but most of it will be. There's still a little bit left on the grant side.
Okay. I make a motion to pay the application number five for thirty-four thousand, eight twenty, eighty-one, twenty-five using local funds for CDVG grant 1-8523-21.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
New business, no matter, excuse me, any matter not known for which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting agenda out of accordance with Section 3119, excuse me, Title 25OS. Citizen comments? Counselperson report. David?
I got one thing, sir. Very brief. Ms. Starla doesn't know that I'm gonna talk about this, so this will be a surprise to She's actually used some of her own money to buy some needed office supplies, and I think you bought a telephone for one of our employees, is that correct?
Yes.
Anything else, ma'am? Did you spend money on your own personal money?
Well, no.
Okay.
But we had no funds, and the phone had to be paid for right then. They wouldn't last long.
Yes, ma'am. I totally understand, and I wanted these guys to know it. I guess, Cliff, I'm not on the bank accounts, so somebody has got to give her access to some kind of money to pay for stuff, and we need to fix that. We need to fix it somehow, very quickly, and I don't know how to do it. You guys?
As far as reimbursing her?
No, I'm talking about, we need to give her the capability of buying what we need to operate with.
Well, she has that, she can do that, just fill out a purchase order.
And reimbursement.
Yeah. Fill out a purchase order to you to reimburse.
Okay.
But we can't put her on the bank account as a signer.
Well, that's not what I'm asking for.
Okay.
My purpose here is to make the board aware.
I didn't think it was.
My purpose is to make the board aware that this nice lady that we hired as an interim town administrator is using her own money to buy stuff with, and that don't sit well with me, and I don't know how to fix it.
Yeah.
So, I think in this forum right here, we need to figure out a way to fix it. I don't know how to.
You mean going forward?
Going forward, yeah. I don't want to see her have to spend her own money.
I think most everywhere will allow us to charge. Who won't?
Most, a lot. And I don't have it all right here, but a lot of the accounts have been cut off or no pay, or late pay, and so we no longer have an account with them.
Well, I need to know which one of those they are so I can find those invoices that are missing.
I know there is a Sam's account.
We don't have them, then we can't pay them if we don't have them, so.
I know that there's an Amazon one that had been cut off that is back on now, and it's like a hundred and seventy dollars for renewal. A Sam's membership is out there, maybe a hundred and fifty renewal on that, and that's just like a charge that you've got just, you know, so many days to pay it, or they can't, they cut the accounts off. And Staples, we do not have one. Staples would be a big plus, to have that.
We had a Staples.
We had one.
I think we had one, and if I remember correctly, they did away with the, like, the business side of their charge accounts.
Yes.
So we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna have to do to get Staples back.
Well, I don't think they offer that anymore, from what I read.
Yeah, that's what I was understanding.
And I've got three sets of cards up there now I've gotta go get. So that's looking probably right at a hundred dollars there. Staples did away with their business accounts so that we don't have a way to charge up there anymore.
I'd say we do away with Staples. I have from Maryfield Office Supply, and they'll deliver every week.
And they charge. We use them all. Because we used to use Maryfield in the past.
Okay.
Can you, if you give it to them and have an invoice, can you go ahead and get the purchase order approved and get a check cut and take it with you?
I could do that, if we knew in advance what it was.
I don't think we cut checks from the.
I don't think so, because nobody else can sign. I did have an order which Staples didn't have the items, and I went on and was able to get on the computer, and Amazon had a few days out before we had to pay the membership, and I was able to get on that, and I actually saved seventy-five dollars by doing that instead of going to Staples.
Staples is.
And it's coming here. I don't have to go pick it up, so. But the Amazon one was kind of nice. In the olden days, when we had a business, we had an office account that covered that, and I would keep so much money in it and, you know, allow other people to sign for things that.
Do you guys use petty cash?
I don't know. No, I'd rather not. I think we have the fifty-dollar ones, it's not very big. Yeah, I don't want cash laying around. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't want. Well, I'm not talking about cash, but just bill, I need that, I was asking that.
You mentioned that there were some unpaid bills, some unpaid invoices?
Well, that's why they got cut off in the past, was that there were unpaid bills. They didn't get paid in on time, so they cut it off.
How far in the past?
That was before our time, I don't know.
You don't have any idea how far in the past?
Probably in the last three or four months.
Three or four months?
So it was during transition time.
Thank you.
Which is normal.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to file invoices so we can, we don't want to be bad paying them.
Right.
Have you got from the board what you need, Ms. Starla, on the topic?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I didn't mean, I wasn't trying to throw you under the bus. I just don't want to see you have to spend your own money.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, ma'am?
Thank you.
Appreciate you, okay?
Thanks.
Thank you guys, too.
Harold?
Appreciate you guys.
Randy?
No, I don't have anything.
Bert?
No.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn.
Take it.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Do I need your signatures before you go on?
Yes. But I'm gonna need a better pen than this one, because it's green.
Color of mine.
We're gonna have to charge a waiting fee. Don't need to do anything else?
Nope, no.
Okay. Oh, well, that.
Oh, she wanted it back.
You need the green one, thanks.
Katie's gonna get you though, because it's past six fifteen.
I know, she's got. We've got ten minutes, so it's my dinnertime. I made plans.
You knew better than that.
You should have invited us, and we got you out of here.
Oh, is it six thirty you're having your plans? Oh, it's seven, well. At six thirty, Mark. I guess it's what I get from pre-planning.
Hennessy Utilities Authority Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, August 10th, 2023, 6:00 PM, Town Hall Council Room. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda, minutes of the meeting. Approval of the claims as follows. Number one, July purchase orders, twenty-three thousand, three fifty-six oh six. Number two, August purchase orders, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. August meter deposits, zero. If there's no comments, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda. Take it. Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Question. The last couple of times that they had to shut off the water, working on the, whatever, I was ready to get in the shower last night at ten o'clock, and the water was off. So, we used to get phone calls and our emails, too.
Exactly, and I totally agree, because I was getting texts, I got home, same situation, turned on the kitchen faucet and nothing. And does anybody know about our all-call system?
No, but I found out about it last night, the hard way. So what I did, I did not know it existed, so I came in today, I ran the book off, and that's my weekend reading, and we'll have it set next week sometime.
Oh, okay.
And I'll be able to do that.
So it's something that we still got available.
We call Code Red, it's a book, and I can do that.
Right. Yeah, I knew it was Code Red, but it's an annual fee, and I didn't know if we were still.
Oh, that I don't know, but I'll check into that.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there a broken valve, or?
No, they were just tying in.
Tying in?
Yeah.
New line, done with, I'd say, yeah.
And they wanted to do it yesterday morning, and that would have interrupted all the restaurants, and then they wanted to do it right after lunch. That would have interrupted them, and other places, and so I had them go out and ask, and they offered to do it at night, and that seemed the best night, best time to do it. It hurt less people, so, except Bert.
And Bert.
And Bert.
Yeah. Number four, discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. A, discuss with possible action to approve payment of Marso Enterprises to pay APP number one for a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-five cents using REIT grant and local funds for REIT grant number KF23-2.
Yeah, so your, the funds that are left in your REIT account to have paid for this invoice is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and three cents. So the remaining balance of this invoice will be local funds.
So approximately seven thousand dollars.
Yep. And then there's, there's two point five percent retainage that, so there'll probably be another invoice after this one. Maybe we might come over that.
I make a motion to pay Marso Enterprises one hundred and thirty thousand, six seventy-one using REIT grant and local funds for REIT grant number KF23-2.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Oh.
New business, any matter not known or which could have not been foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with Section 311-9, Title 25OS. Citizen comments?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a citizen comment.
Yes, sir. Come on, James. This doesn't believe. Wow, I'm on mine. Wow.
Wow. Wow. Wow. So keep going.
Bert? Don't you step around her, please? I guess I will. You don't have a choice. I didn't think I did.
On behalf of Hennessy Fire Department, the present members, the past members, the ones in the past that you've served with, the Town of Hennessy, we're honored to present this.
She was even there.
I'm sorry. You want me to continue?
Yeah.
We're honored to, everybody come on in, please.
I thought I heard people upstairs. Or we should for a reason, sir.
Is everybody in? Okay. We're honored to present this to you. You know, I wrote a little notes because I figured I'd try to get my dates mixed up. So you came on in January 3rd of 1978.
Correct.
And you retired June 30th of 2023.
Yes.
So that's forty-five years and six months.
Wow.
I don't believe anybody in the past has that record. You became chief May 1st of 1986, and you held that position until June 30th of this year. So I was thinking about this. The Fire Department, Hennessy Fire Department's been in existence for about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty years. So you've been a third of this department. For the years, the third of the years this department has existed, you have been a member.
Wow.
When you came chief, we were Class Eight, and through your work with the town, the other firemen, we are now a Class Three, and that's really appreciative. When we started, when I started with you in 1986.
Let's just quit with the date.
July of eighty-six, you were chief, and you've been my chief for thirty-seven years, and it's been an honor to serve under you and with you and help you take the department from where it was to where it is today. We were in the old police station with two trucks. We pull the trucks out, set tables up, have our meetings. Well, Bert, we're back to that again. We pull the trucks out, and we set tables up, and we have our meetings again, since we're remodeling. But we want you to accept this. We're honored to give that to you, and thank you for your service.
Wow.
Anybody else, anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, I think we do have, right over here.
I don't know if I can lift that.
We want to take some pictures, too.
Everybody get in there. Guys, guys, come on, guys.
James, behind you.
We do have a comment, but also.
All right. All right.
Bert, can we look at us, please?
I'm admiring this.
It is very nice.
Run more, Bert.
Okay.
Did you get it, Tabitha?
No, that's okay, no, I can get it now.
So we're gonna sit this down because we're not done with you.
Uh-oh.
Oh, goodness, okay.
Mr. Mayor, why are you looking at me?
And Dave's wanting to say something, Dave.
Yes.
Michelle, I'm here.
Whoops. Oh, it's Bert.
Hi, Daddy.
I think I met you in like nineteen.
Oops, sorry.
I just wanted to present you with a small token. It's a forty-five, or thirty-caliber bolt-action fireman's pen.
It's a forty-five, or thirty caliber bolt-action fireman's pin.
Oh, cool.
I thank you very much because as a fellow firefighter from a different town, every time you go on a fire call, you don't know whether you're coming home. So I appreciate what you've done for serving the community.
Thank you. Guys, I don't even know what to say. This was quite a surprise. I thought I heard somebody up front and I thought, eh.
Shoot.
But, you know, I couldn't have done this without every one of you. There's, there's no way. James has been at my right hand for, ever since we were toddlers, I think, when we got on the department. But, uh, the town has been very supportive. And I, I wish I could tie a story in because the first firefighters convention I went to was in McAllister and the fire chief of McAllister stood up and said, thanks to the town, the city McAllister's support, with all the new equipment they've gotten us, we've got a, we've got a new ladder truck, we got a new pumper truck. And we had an old house over here the other day that with our old, our old stuff, it would have burned completely to the ground in two hours. But with all this new stuff, we were able to keep it burning about six. But I can't think of anything to tie that to Hennessy. But honestly, guys, I'm, I'm so proud of you. I'm proud of what's going on down there and I love everyone of you. And I better sit down.
We need more pictures with the whole one.
Bert, we have cake. We have potch. So when the meeting's over with, the quicker you guys say adjourn. Bert, we wanna have a picture of you and us around the cake, please.
Wow, okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert, cake, you ready?
David?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate all the work that you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I'd give it away if I.
Do you have a paper cake?
Dress stuff on, so.
All right, let me put a gift.
Did you get everything you needed?